Thank you, Clerk Van. Good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council for May 13, 2021. And with that, I'd like to ask our Vice Mayor, Portia Middleton, to lead us in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It does. Sounds like we practiced. All right, with that, Amy, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Middleton.
Here.
And Mayor Miller.
Here.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, May 17 at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed on the City of Citrus Heights YouTube channel.
Next item is approval of the agenda. And do staff wish to make any changes or any council members? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
A second.
Motion by Middleton, seconded by Schaefer. Ms. Van, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
And Mayor Miller.
Yes. And with that, let's move to the next item, please.
The next item is presentation number four, a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming National Public Works Week. And we have Operations Manager Regina Cave here tonight to accept the proclamation.
Thank you. And I've asked Councilmember Schaefer to present the proclamation.
Okay, so this is my very first proclamation I'm presenting, so I just want to, number one, say thank you for all the public works, workers out there, for working so hard and keeping us safe and really keeping the roads open and keeping all of our facilities operational. So with that, I will start out by saying, this is a proclamation, May 16th, proclaiming May 16th and May 22nd, 2021 is National Public Works Week. Whereas public works officials, professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital to the importance to sustainable and resilient communities in the public health, quality of life, and well-being of the residents and businesses of Citrus Heights. Whereas these infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without dedicated effort of public work professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees of all levels of the government and in the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. Whereas throughout the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, Citrus Heights Public Works personnel have successfully managed and maintained essential services to the community of Citrus Heights, continuing to work hard each and every day to help keep our community safe and functioning with various responsibilities and programs related to the COVID-19 response. Whereas Public Works helps maintain community strength by working together to provide an infrastructure of services and transportation, water, wastewater, stormwater treatment, public buildings and spaces, parks and grounds, emergency management, and first response, solid waste, and right-of-way management. Whereas Public Works provides togetherness needed for collaboration with all the stakeholders in this, in capital projects, infrastructure solutions, and the quality of life services. And whereas the American Public Works Association has select "Stronger Together" as a theme for the National Public Works Week 2021, which challenges our citizens to think about the role of public works plays in creating a great place to live by working together, and the impact and the public works professionals can have on our communities is magnified and the results in the ability to accomplish goals once thought unattainable. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim the week of May 16th to 22nd, 2021, as National Public Works Week. In this city, and urges the Citrus Heights civic leaders, businesses, citizens, and youth to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest in understanding the importance of public works for the growth, prosperity, and the future of Citrus Heights. And hereby salute this city dedicated public works professionals and witness here of Steve Miller, Mayor.
Thank you, Tim. Regina?
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Schaefer, Mayor, and councilmembers. It is my honor, not only as Operations Manager for the City of Citrus Heights, but also as the Vice President of our Sacramento Chapter of the American Public Works Association, to accept this proclamation, recognize all the public works professionals nationally and especially specifically here in Citrus Heights, of all the hard work and dedication that goes into keeping our streets safe and working with our community to keep public works hopefully at the forefront. We strive to make sure folks understand not only the importance of public works, but also to keep interest going in our next generation of leaders and hoping that they can see how important public works is to equality of life and really trying to promote trades equally as important aspect of public works. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Regina, and thank you for everything you do. Whether you go to college and become an engineer or right out of high school, you can go to work in public works and make a very good living. So with that, let's move on to the next item.
The next item is presentation number five, a proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming May as Building Safety Month. And tonight, we have Chief Building Official Greg Anderson accepting the proclamation.
Great, thank you. And this ties in rather well with Public Works Week. And I've asked Councilmember Daniels to read the proclamation.
Okay, thank you very much. Tim handled a whole week proclamation. I'm going to handle a whole month proclamation, so I'm not going to read it all because it's going to go on and on and on, but it's a very important proclamation. This is a proclamation by the City of Citrus Heights for Building Safety Month, May 2021. Whereas, our city is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of disaster. And whereas our competence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And then I'm going to drop down a little bit. Whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, energy-efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to America's prosperity. And whereas, prevent, prepare, protect, building codes save. The theme of Building Safety Month 2021 encourages all Americans to raise awareness about the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, energy conservation, water safety, training the next generation, and new technologies in the construction industry. And whereas each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve public safety, resilience, man, I had to say that three times, resilience and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now, therefore, Steve Miller, Mayor of the City of Citrus Heights, does hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Building Safety Month. And accordingly, we encourage our citizens to join with their communities in participation in Building Safety Month activities, signed by the mayor. It'll be presented to Greg Anderson, who is probably the, we'll call him the top guy in the state in this regard. Greg does a wonderful job for the City of Citrus Heights and the people of Citrus Heights, and we're very lucky to have him.
Thanks, Brett. And with that, Greg, would you like to say a few words?
Well, thank you, Mayor, and member of the council, and thanks for the kind comments, Brett. Yeah, so Building Safety Month is an international campaign, it's a month-long campaign, to bring public awareness to Building Safety Month. And every year, the ICC, which is International Code Council, kind of breaks it down into four different weekly themes. And this year, the weekly theme, so Week One is concentrated on energy and innovation. So the building safety industry is on the cutting edge of energy efficiency, building science and innovation, from green construction and resiliency to product evaluation, certification, and codification. The International Code Council family of solutions is part of the technological transformation to make our building safer and our industry more advanced and adaptable. Week Two is concentrated on training and the next generation. Now, this is a very important one. The importance of training and professional development. Well-trained, motivated, building safety professionals are key to creating and maintaining a successful built environment. Training is important because it helps avoid mistakes and accidents and properly enforce the code. The building safety field encompasses a wide gamut of specialties and offers many excellent career opportunities that contribute to the safety in the built environment. This one is kind of key to me with being on the Outreach Committee of the Sacramento Valley Association of Building Officials and Outreach Committee. Most of building officials I see in the region are either kind of gray-haired like myself or no hair. We're trying to get the next generation of building code officials, permit technicians, plans examiners. It's a great opportunity for people. I don't think a lot of people know that there is a building safety industry that they can get involved in, but if you have any questions whatsoever about this industry, I mean, please feel free to call me, or you can reach me through our city website at www.citrusheights.net, go through Community Development Services, and then under Building and Safety Division. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have and lead you in the right direction. Week Three focuses on water safety. So clean water is the world's most precious commodity. According to the World Health Organization estimates, as of June 2019, 785 million people lack even the basic drinking water services, including 144 million people who are dependent on surface water. Building, plumbing, and green codes help guard it for future generations, conservation, and safe disposal. Code officials are vigilant protectors of our water supply. Because of their dedicated service, you can turn on the tap at your home and draw sufficient clean water. They take nothing for granted, so you can. Week Four is another important one. It's focused on disaster preparedness. We've had our fair share of disasters in California over the last years. Natural disasters are on a very high frequency. Advanced planning for devastating events like hurricanes, floods, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfires, and earthquakes helps individuals and communities increase the health and safety of their population during a disaster, protects the local tax base, ensures continuity of essential services, and supports a faster recovery in the aftermath of a disaster. So if any of you have any questions in regards to building safety or any building questions at all, again, feel free to call us at City Hall, talk to the building department, you can reach us through our website. Again, it's www.citrusheights.net, Community Services, go to Building Services, Building and Safety Division. If you want to find out more information about building safety or the different themes, you can go to the ICC website, which is the International Code Council. Their website is www.iccsafe.org. There's a lot of information every week that comes up in regards to building safety. There's informative tips, there's some neat videos and different things that you could view to learn about building safety for your home. So with that, if you have any questions for me, council, I'll take them.
Any questions for Greg?
No, I don't have any questions, but I just want to commend you, Greg, and your staff, and Regina, you and your staff as well, for the ongoing good work that you do on behalf of the city, especially during this last year when you had to operate remotely and you didn't miss a beat. I am looking forward to the day when we can have our in-person celebration again like we used to, and we can really get a feel, and even the public can get involved with what building safety is all about and what a good job you do. So thanks very much.
Thank you very much. It has been a very interesting and busy year for us.
Yeah, and I wanted to thank you personally, Greg, and your building division for all the work they did, you did during the COVID shutdown. And especially, I understand you had an uptick in inspections last year?
By far, yes. It was, like I said, it was an unusual year with the pandemic starting in January of 2020. Typically, when we've had things of this nature happen, it just seemed that people had a tendency to haul under their money to see what was going to happen next. That did not happen this year. It was just the opposite. It was, we were busier now than we have been in 20 years. So it's really unusual. I mean, we're glad we have it and glad to see it, but yes, we weren't expecting it.
Well, then, I'm aware of some creative workarounds, including some virtual inspections, which was very impressive in how you accommodated the public and our builders in town. So thank you again. Thank you to you and Regina and everybody in Public Works and General Services for the good job you do. And with that, take care, my friend. With that, we're ready to move on to the next presentation.
The next presentation, number six, is Regional Grant Awards for the City of Citrus Heights.
Mayor Miller and City Councilmembers, Mary Poole here with Leslie Blumquist and Regina Cave from General Services, along with Megan Huer and Nicole Baxter from Communications and Economic Development. Tonight, we're going to talk about the grant funding that the city recently was awarded from the SA-COGS regional funding cycle for 2020. As you know, this was a historic amount of funding that the city received through the SA-COGS regional funding program. So tonight, we wanted to take a few minutes to tell you about the projects that were selected and why. We will walk through some information about the projects, talk about the funding, and then highlight the people and the organizations that really made our applications shine. I will now turn it over to Leslie to take us through the next few slides.
Mary, over the years, the process of applying for grants has become extremely competitive. There are a lot of great projects in both the state and the region, and we're all applying for the same limited funding. As part of the interview portion of the Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Phase Two Grant Process, our team developed a state-of-the-art, interactive website, which included videos and clickable images, which really helped to set us apart and also introduce information in a new way. So we'd like to take a few minutes to show you what was developed and discuss some of the project components that's now fully funded for construction. Nicole Baxter, our Communications Officer, is sharing her screen right now and will now take us to the interactive website.
Citrus Heights in northeastern Sacramento County is the geographical center of the region, between two of the largest employment areas, Rancho Cordova and Roseville, and home to nearly 90,000 residents. We have big plans for the Auburn Boulevard corridor. We have land use and complete streets policies in place in an effort to encourage mixed-use development. We're building on a project that's already started, carrying the positive impacts from the first phase of the project to the rest of the corridor, focusing on safety for all users, including bikes, pedestrians, and cars, to encourage different travel modes and lower greenhouse gas emissions. This corridor connects to a regional transit center, the Lewis Orlando Transit Center, just outside city limits, with regional connections to RT, Placer County Transit, and Light Rail. Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Phase One, completed in 2014, completely transformed the corridor between Sylvan Corners and Rush Park. Improvements included upgrades to bike lanes, separated sidewalks with a landscape buffer and vertical curbs, increasing safety for pedestrians. Landscape medians were constructed throughout the corridor, restricting left turns, resulting in a documented crash reduction. Driveway consolidation removes conflict points, further increasing safety for pedestrians. For this second phase, we've already completed the final design, right-of-way, and the environmental documents, which are all nearing completion. Now, we need $9 million to secure the full $23 million needed for construction. We've already identified $14 million, but fully funding the project allows us to reduce private property impacts, resulting in a better overall product for the best price possible. And now, we'd like to take you on a 3D walk of the Boulevard, highlighting some of our blueprint planning principles and illustrating the policies we already have in place to encourage compact development, transportation choice, mixed-use development, housing choice and diversity, and quality design. So now, Nicole will start to guide us through the walk along Auburn Boulevard. Currently shown, we're in the southern end of the first phase of the project near Sylvan Corners, constructed in 2014. Here, we see the constructed wide sidewalk separated from the roadway by a landscape buffer, upgraded Class II bike lanes providing the dedicated space for cyclists, canopy trees which help to reduce greenhouse gas impacts, raised medians with trees and vegetation limiting access points, reducing left-turn conflicts and increasing traffic safety, the decorative LED streetlights, resulting in less energy use when you compare to traditional street lighting options, narrowed travel lanes allowing for better use of the existing right-of-way, and undergrounded utilities, increasing aesthetics, reducing crash potential, and increasing walkability. There's five schools within a half-mile radius of Auburn Boulevard, and these complete streets improvements were designed with children in mind, creating a safe routes for students. And the construction of the Complete Streets Phase One improvements has helped to spur some exciting opportunities in the area, including the future home of a for-sale, single-family housing development, which will bring new families to the area, supporting local retail and our job market. So as Nicole walks us down the roadway to the segment that's yet to be constructed, you see in this website the different colored shapes along the roadway. Each of these is a clickable shape and provides information with its benefits. In the Phase Two segment now, as you can see, the Auburn Boulevard in this portion of the corridor was originally built for a different era, one dominated by and designed for vehicles. We see here the rolled curbs that do not provide protection for pedestrians. Sidewalks are located immediately adjacent to the roadway, forcing pedestrians to walk near the high speed and high volume of cars, missing bike lanes, and the utility poles that crowd the sidewalk, making travel for those that use mobility aids difficult, as well as creating a safety hazard for vehicles. The Complete Streets project is only one of many efforts to improve quality of life along Auburn Boulevard. The Activate Auburn Grant Program helps local businesses with facade improvements. One such recipient of this grant program was Crepeson Burgers, in helping to improve aesthetics and business opportunity along this roadway. Across the street, we see the Grand Oaks Shopping Center, another location for future development, all of which has been identified in the Boulevard's specific plan, providing guidelines and information in an effort to spur redevelopment. The fact that these two items are in place really helped to bolster our competitiveness with the grant application process for this project. As Nicole continues northerly along the roadway, we see a large number of existing driveways. The Phase Two project will reduce the number of driveways by 50%, increasing vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian safety, as well as encouraging transportation choice. Currently, the excessively high number of driveways directly contributes to the higher-than-typical crash rate on this corridor. Close to the northern city limits, a new gateway feature will be constructed, incorporating a traffic signal and providing a location for safe crossings from one side of the street to the other, as well as a safe place to make left turns. We've recently developed three different concepts for the gateway, which will be presented to the public for feedback prior to formal selection, with the goal to welcome citizens as they enter Citrus Heights and enhance community ownership. Having this interactive website as part of our interview process for the grant also allowed us to feature community partners that would not typically be involved in a grant interview, such as Jennifer Rubin of Dignity Health.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Rubin with Dignity Health Mercy San Juan Medical Center, and I work in our trauma prevention division. Our job is to help the community prevent injuries before they occur. And we always take a look at the leading causes of injury that come into our emergency room and see what we can do to stop those before they happen. Our leading cause is falls, older adults that fall. And we know that getting out and walking in the community and staying healthy and strong is one great way to prevent falls. So we would love for our residents to have safe places to walk. Our second and third leading causes of injury are bicycle and pedestrian injuries. And we know that those can be prevented by having safe streets in our communities.
In all reality, our website is great, our staff is great, but the project is also really great, which is why it was selected for funding. And it's really important, too, that it would provide significant safety increases to the Citrus Heights community, including construction of safety connections to the Lewis Orlando Transit Center. Transit Center is the only connection that SACRT has to Roseville and points north, providing access to multiple job centers and services, Kaiser and Sierra College. This transit center connects multiple regional routes in Sacramento and Placer Counties, including three light rail stations, and links to Amtrak stations in Roseville, Rockland, and Auburn. Overall, we're really thrilled that the Auburn Boulevard Phase Two project was selected to receive the full $9 million in funding that was requested, which fully funds the $23 million need for construction. We're finalizing the design now, and we anticipate construction to start in spring of 2022. In addition to the award for Auburn Boulevard, we were also selected to receive over $2 million for the old Auburn Road Complete Streets Phase One project. This project will construct complete streets improvements from Tiara Way, which is just west of Sunrise, to Gary Oak, which is just east of Fair Oaks Boulevard. It's an approximately three-quarter mile long roadway segment, and the improvements include separated sidewalks, buffered bike lanes, a road diet between Antelope and Fair Oaks. And a road diet's a reduction in travel lanes and reallocation of that space for non-motorized users. The improvements will also include lighting installations and upgrades, landscaping, gateway treatments, and an enhanced crossing at Tiara Way, as is shown on the rendering on the screen. The grant awarded will cover the design, environmental, and right-of-way phases of the project only, and will be using our new enhanced grant application skills and techniques to apply for construction funds again during the next grant cycle.
So for Auburn Boulevard, our project funding, as many council members may recall, just like the last phase of Auburn Boulevard, we are having to put together multiple funding sources. While this project or this phase will not include 18 or 19 different funding sources like the last time, this does come in a close second. As you can see, we have multiple grants that we have secured over the years, and then we also have a substantial portion provided by local funds, not only through our line of credit, we have our transportation funds, we have our impact fees, stormwater quality fees as well for eligible items along the Boulevard. So for our project funding, we have approximately 75% of the overall project. And keep in mind, this also includes the $4 million that we had secured back in 2013 to initiate the design and right-of-way acquisitions. So about $20 million, almost $21 million in total grant funds, and then another $7 million in our local matching dollars. And those funds will be appropriated or allocated according to the types of work that will be construction along the Boulevard, as we've talked about in many other projects. Some elements of this project are eligible for grant funds, and some are not, which equates to a slightly different split in terms of matching dollars. Typically, we look at somewhere around 88% grant funds and 12% matching dollars. In this case, we are having to provide a little bit more local match than what is typical. In this case, we are having to provide a little bit more local match than what is typical.
Thank you, Regina. So on the project supporter slide, the main point that we wanted to show here is the extensive community support that we had for both of these projects, both externally and internally. The grant review teams really want to see support from people and organizations that have skin in the game. So for us to have so many businesses and organizations with a stake in these projects, write letters of support for us, really made our applications shine. Some organizations and businesses are even more involved, such as the Auburn Boulevard Business Association, or ABA. This nonprofit association has been an active supporter, partner, and conduit between the city and businesses about the Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets project since they formed in 2016. And this is just one example of the partnerships that we have along with the Auburn Boulevard and Old Auburn Boulevard. As I said before, there was extensive external and internal support that was critical to the success of these funding programs, these funding applications. This slide shows you the staff members who worked tirelessly to review grant requirements, participate in pre-submitting reviews with SAICOG staff, develop and write the applications, prepare exhibits, package and submit applications, and then put together presentations, such as the one that Leslie and Nicole took us through at the beginning of this item. In this funding cycle, between SAICOG and ATP, the city submitted three different applications for Auburn Boulevard and two separate applications for Old Auburn Boulevard. The applications go through a rigorous review process and must meet the goals of each funding program, which, of course, each have a slightly different focus. So having such a great team, from project assistants to technical staff to division managers, as well as the support from the city manager and the city council, was absolutely essential to this success. In summary, we are incredibly happy to be here tonight to talk about these funding awards. These awards make up the largest grant package the city has ever received from SAICOG. We also want to point out that economic development, active transportation, safety, and complete streets are fundamental goals that drive today's transportation funding. The city was able to demonstrate how both of these projects meet those objectives. We also want to note that while funding the city's portion of these grants is challenging, it's absolutely essential in our efforts to maintain public infrastructure and enhance alternative modes of transportation, one of the city council's strategic goals. And finally, this all leads to economic revitalization that helps us reach the city's goals to diversify for a resilient economy and improve quality of life. And with that, we will conclude our presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Could you go back a couple more slides? It shows everybody from staff that worked on this. Thank you. I do want to thank you all, because I know how difficult it is to prepare these applications. And you're talking, like you said, different requirements, so you have to tailor them to the federal government, the state government. Many thanks to SAICOG and our regional partner, STA. I mean, I've seen you guys turning the couches over for money to put these projects together, so congratulations on the amount we received, and thank you very much. Any other comments or questions from council members?
Yeah.
Mr. Daniels.
This is a great example of never give up. This is the Never Give Up Project. And I can't tell you how excited I am to finally see us getting there. 20 years, basically, getting it done. And this was a big deal when I was first on the council forever ago. And there was a different type of funding, and we didn't think it would take anywhere near this. And then the brakes were put on that kind of funding. But so excited to get us to this point. And I'm definitely committed, as I'm sure the other council members are, to the city's portion of this for those folks that have businesses and residents down that area. They've waited a long time to see the level of funding and commitment from the city that we've been able to do in most other areas. And so, very excited that they now get to see the works that their tax dollars can do. And so, I would definitely support whatever we need to do to get the city's portion of this done.
Good comment.
I also want to just commend you. I wish I'd been there when you got the announcement that the grant had been approved in full. What a moment that must have been for you all. So well-deserved. You know, it's been a long time coming. Remember the very early days when we approved this specific plan? And as Brett said, we had a different pot of money available to us then than we do not have available to us now. So I am very excited to see this come to fruition. Can you give us an idea of timing, where we go from here, and what the next step is, and when we could expect some level of construction to begin?
Of course. So we're working on the 65% designs right now, working with our project partners and utility agencies to finalize the design. We're working towards a goal to complete that by the end of 2021 or very early 2022, with the hopes to start construction in May, about a year from now.
Great. Thank you, Leslie.
Mr. Schaefer.
So thank you. I just wanted to express, number one, you know, when I drive through Sylvan Corners and up towards Antelope Road, I just, I'm amazed at how great that looks. I look forward to, and I kind of share this with friends and family, about how the next phase will look. I think it is really tremendous, and I just want to commend the whole group for all the hard work they put in on this. And we're, as residents, we're very, very proud and very excited to see the end of this project.
Thanks, Tim.
Wonderful, wonderful work. I'm just sitting here looking at this last slide of the project supporters, and you all have done, staff's done a wonderful job of just bringing together the community and getting that application to where we needed it to be. I'm so excited that we're going to be able to see progress in our community, but more importantly, that you have the relationships necessary and the ingenuity to get it done. So thank you again for your work.
Thank you. And one thing I want to be clear about, because I work in construction, you know, it's going to be a beautiful project when it's done, but construction has impacts. And there will be some inconveniences to the traveling public. There will be some inconveniences to the businesses along Auburn Boulevard. But we will make them as, less impactful as possible. And then, you know, when it's all done, you forget about that. But during the time of construction, and I think Councilmember Bruins thinks I'm crazy, but I purposely drive through these construction zones to see how they're doing and what they're doing. And it may take a while, but I just ask for everyone's patience as we improve these corridors, both Old Auburn and Auburn Boulevard. Thank you, everyone. And with that, we'll move on.
The next item is comments by council members and regional board updates.
Councilmember Bruins, what have you been up to?
Okay, so this week was my meeting week. And I had two meetings on Wednesday. First one in the morning was Regional Stand, Second one is Sewer District. I've been serving on a subcommittee, because our district engineer is retiring in September. And so, we concluded our work and made a recommendation to the board. And so, that came forward on Wednesday. Kristoff Dobson has been selected to be the next district engineer, the recommendation. So I think a full vote from the board will be forthcoming on that. I'm excited. I've known Kristoff since my, the early days on the council and even before, when I ran this chamber commerce. He's got great experience. He'll be a good district engineer. And so, it's been exciting. This is my fourth district engineer that I've served with. And so, he's well-qualified, and I think, you know, a lot of our public workspeople know him. We also had a PAL board meeting this week. And I'm excited to say that we continue, our PAL board and officers in the police department continue to reach out and serve the kids to the best of their ability during this whole COVID-19 era. We are making plans for in-place, face-to-face events. Everybody's excited about that. Our anti-vape, anti-smoking campaign continues to be the main outreach to the students on campus, been very successful. So I look forward to at least a modified program this summer to get the kids back engaged on a face-to-face basis. That's it.
Thank you, Jeanne. Mr. Daniels.
No board update. Just want to let the public know, if they haven't heard. I think what I, I think we can say that we got our final, or at least certain notification, that we will be receiving federal funds to the tune of almost $16 million, with half of that hopefully, hopefully the checks in the mail, kind of a. But they also put out the rules or the guidelines for that, and I think they look very positive for us. And so, very excited about that. And hopefully, we will see some quick resolutions to some of our mainly public safety concerns and stuff like that. So hopefully, again, the checks in the mail, kind of a timeframe, and we will receive those funds right away. And maybe, I don't know, at the end of this meeting, we might get an update on where we are with that. I know, because there is a process, hoops to jump through, if you will. And it would be nice to know where we are with hoops, if we're getting them jumped through. That's it.
All right. Mr. Schaefer.
So I didn't have any, I don't have any board updates, unfortunately. I wasn't able to make the Sunrise Marketplace board meeting today. But I'm not a board member there, but I love sitting in on that and listening to what's going on. I just wanted to, again, reach out, and I know we've said this before, but Alfred Sanchez is doing tireless work with homeless and developing a really, sort of a tough-love approach with the homeless folks. I think it's a really positive thing. He's a great conduit for information as to what we might, how we might deal with the homeless issue. It's very high on the public's mind, and we want to keep them, keep that in our hearts and thoughts, and try to find a way to resolve this issue. So other than that, I am delighted to see, out in the community, that businesses are thriving. It's great to see the CDC come out and basically say, if you're fully vaccinated, that masks are no longer necessary. Delighted to see that from the CDC. And hopefully, California will issue the same kind of proclamation. So with that, thank you very much, and that's it.
Thanks, Tim. Vice Mayor Middleton.
Yes, so no updates for me. I also just wanted to give a quick plug for the Citrus Heights Chamber. They're hosting a drive-through concert featuring Journey Revisited. And the Citrus Heights marching band will also be making appearance. The event is May 22nd, and proceeds will go to a COVID relief grant for local businesses in our community. So I encourage everyone to go out and get their tickets and support our local businesses.
That sounds fun. All right, and for myself, we had a regional transit meeting Monday night. We did approve a submission of a grant application for Bus Rapid Transit for major corridors in Sacramento. And that would include Citrus Heights to Ranch Cudova down Sunrise, and possibly a tie to Light Rail at Watt Avenue. Again, this is an application for a grant and to implement it. I think Stockton Boulevard has the biggest demand right now. And that may be the first place we see Bus Rapid Transit tried in this region. Today, we had a Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting. And we also represent the Sacramento Abandoned Vehicles Service Authority. And that program, which charges a dollar, I think, on everybody's car registration, DMV collects it, it's due to expire in 2022. And when they collect these registrations, they reimburse the cities in the county for costs associated with removing abandoned vehicles. And I should correct myself also, I think the California Highway Patrol uses this money. Now, it doesn't fully fund it. Probably about half the cost to all the cities and the county is reimbursed. But this will expire, and it, since passage, I forget what proposition number it was, but this fee is now considered a tax. So when it expires, we can't just automatically renew this fee, because you're paying for someone else's vehicle to be removed, not your own. It's a great benefit to the communities. It gets these broken-down vehicles off our roads. But unfortunately, we'd have to take it for a vote, and that couldn't happen till the following November. So DMV will stop collecting in April. And then, if there is an initiative and it does pass, it's another year before DMV would start issuing the money again. So it's a worthwhile program, but we're having the discussions now, and we'll make a decision whether we just cancel the program altogether or move on and put it on the ballot. But that has an expense to it, too. And the cities in the county would have to share based on their, you know, what they get out of it. So, you know, I don't know if we'll be in a position to support it. And with that, that's all my meetings, and we can move on to the next item.
The next item is public comment. And members may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you wish to address the council during the Zoom meeting, please unfunction line from a telephone to indicate your desire to speak. When your name is called, I will allow you to unmute your microphone to speak. And for the general public comment, I do not have any written public comment. I do have written public comment for item 14, which I'll hold until that item.
Yeah, thank you.
So let me see, it looks like we do have two raised hands for public comment. So I'll begin with Robert Wickert. And you can go ahead and unmute yourself to speak.
Thank you very much. My name is Robert Wickert. I commented last meeting about not cutting the police budget. That was my recommendation. You didn't take that recommendation. According to your police chief, you cut school resource officers and youth and family services. That was, I'll have to say it, it was shocking. Those are prevented functions, and they're the very essence of protect and serve. But you took the staff recommendation and you cut them. I need to remind the city council that when you take the staff recommendation, the staff doesn't necessarily live in Citrus Heights and doesn't necessarily suffer from these cuts to public safety. We citizens of Citrus Heights are counting on you, the council, who live in Citrus Heights, to question and correct the staff when they disregard the best interests of your citizens. Widely accepting the staff recommendation doesn't really serve the citizens when it's contrary to their best interests. I hope you consider that going forward. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Wickert.
And I do have one other raised hand from the phone number ending in 6470. You can go ahead and unmute your telephone and speak. If you could just state your name. And you may have to do star six to unmute on the telephone.
Yes. My name is Arthur Kitterling. And a person here the other day was wanting me to ask if you have any plans, like of where the Sears used to be. And do you have plans yet, like to start Sunrise Mall at all? And I thank you for the answers, and I'll listen to it from on the phone there. And I thank you very much for listening to me. Thank you.
Arthur, thank you for your questions. We're still doing the environmental review for the mall property and currently negotiating with the property owners there for the specific plan. I don't know any plans yet. I think you mentioned the Sears property. That's now owned by Seritage. I think they're championing it a bit to get going. But again, we have to get this environmental review complete, which will allow redevelopment of the mall, and I'm very hopeful that happens. Thank you for your questions, Arthur. Are there any more public comments?
I do not see raised hands.
Okay, then let's move on to the next.
Oh, Mayor, I just had one person.
Oh, good. Let's fit him in.
Lisa, if you can, I'll allow you to, you can now unmute yourself and speak. Lisa, if you can, I'll allow you to, you can now unmute yourself and speak.
Okay. I was just wanting to agree with Mr. Whitaker about the police thing, about having them available and taking care of things. And I was wondering, what kind of housing or apartments are they going to put on Auburn Boulevard over there by Sylvan Corners? I don't remember them saying what it was going to be, apartments or regular housing?
Regular housing, Lisa, single-family homes.
Oh, okay. That would be cool. Okay. That's the only question I had at this time.
Well, thank you for calling in.
Thank you.
Okay, last chance. Hands up.
I do not see any other raised hands.
Okay, so we'll hold the other public comments to item 14, is it?
Yes.
All right, and let's move on to consent calendar.
The next item is consent calendar items seven through 13.
Do any council members wish to pull any items? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Daniels, second by, I'm going to give it to Bruins tonight. And with that, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Miller?
Aye. Okay, and on to, let me say this, the consent calendar passed unanimously. Now we can move on to the regular calendar.
So the next item is regular calendar, item number 14. The subject is consider appointment of an interim acting city manager and authorize the necessary hiring procedures. The recommendation is to direct to the appointment of an interim acting city manager and approve the necessary resolution and/or contract depending on the action of the council.
Thank you. And I believe our city attorney, Ryan Jones, is, will do a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, due to the city manager, Chris Boyd, retiring on May 11th, the city is now in need to appoint somebody as an interim city manager until a permanent city manager is hired. So since his retirement date, Mr. Boyd has expressed an interest in being brought back on as, on an interim basis as a city manager until a permanent city manager is hired. Under CalPERS rules, Mr. Boyd was not allowed to negotiate terms of a contract until his retirement date on May 11th. So the council now has the opportunity to appoint an interim city manager. If the council elects to appoint Mr. Boyd, it does have a resolution and contract before it to appoint him as a retired annuitant for that interim city manager position. Just to highlight a few key terms in the proposed contract, pay him an hourly rate of $128.79, which is the same salary he was making on an hourly basis as the full-time city manager under his contract. He would not be allowed, under PERS rules, to get any benefits, retirement, accrue leave. And if, this contract would be for maximum length of time of 12 months. It does really be outside, it, it would probably end, well, it would end upon the hiring of a full-time city manager, which likely would take place certainly before that 12-month time span. So that's the introduction. Mayor and council, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Let's go ahead and take public comment on this item.
Okay, I will go ahead and read the public comment that we've received and then see if there are any raised hands. So the first public comment is from Dr. Jana Karpinski-Costa. I am Dr. Jana Karpinski-Costa and served on the city council for eight years, 2004 through 2012. After his 31 years of service, I am glad that Mr. Boyd will be able to spend some time with his children. Meanwhile, we need an interim city manager who can step in and help the community transition through post-COVID life as businesses and public venues reopen. Over the next few months, Henry Tingle was our city manager for 17 years. He led our new city on a strong and true path. Under Henry Tingle's leadership, we gained regional recognition, local independence, and improved the quality of life of every citizen in this city. I know the community, the neighborhood associations, and regional leaders would welcome him back with open arms. You all know he is the best person for this job. I strongly urge you to offer the position to Henry Tingle. The next public comment is from Thomas Sheeler. The fact that a potential contract is a possible action makes me concerned that one of the best candidates is not being considered. Mr. Tingle has stated that he was surprised that the Sentinel contacted him on this issue. So unless council has reached out since that article, I believe that the best candidate is not being considered. I urge that no selection be made until Mr. Tingle is interviewed for this important position. I understand the importance of filling the position, but I do not think continuing our current situation is the best for the citizens of Citrus Heights. The next public comment from Forrest Allen. At this time, I think that the city council should ask Henry Tingle if he would help us out upon the notice of Mr. Boyd retiring. Henry has done a fine job all these years, so might have new ideas to help us out. Next is from Bill Van Duiker. I support bringing Chris Boyd back as interim city manager. The work that Chris Boyd has done on behalf of the city is phenomenal. Sunrise Tomorrow, Auburn Boulevard, Phase Two, general focus on economic development across several fronts. The city staff structure to make it less costly and more efficient are just a few of the things that stand out to me. As one of the leaders who brought cityhood to the ballot and co-chaired the Yes on Measure R, the incorporation measure, I am passionate about the future of our city. Former manager Henry Tingle had his strengths, and we have the police department, civic center, and city hall as monuments to his leadership. But Henry knew, as all who had been involved in the city from the beginning knew, that we would run into deficits toward the end of our 25-year property tax drought. Chris Boyd did not create the deficit. It was there all along. But Chris has done a great job in managing the complexities of the tight money, economic downturn, and all of the other issues we have faced in the last five years. Chris Boyd is the person who can bring the vision of Sunrise Tomorrow to fruition. Any other interim city manager would be a caretaker until the new permanent manager is hired, and this opportunity might slip away. Our economic future depends on Sunrise Tomorrow becoming a reality. I believe Chris can do it. Next is from Kermit Schultz. Been a resident or business owner in this community since 1979. Our business supported Measure M in this city's administration. We felt it was a small price to pay to ensure a better quality of life for all of us that live or work here. There has been nothing but transparency in the city's administration. For anyone from this community to point fingers and make baseless accusations that the present one is totally to blame for whatever financial issues we have will never solve those issues. Financial decisions from the past as well have contributed to the budget issues, and now, like it or not, those of you on the council need to find whatever answers there are that are necessary to correct them. I strongly suggest you retain Chris Boyd to help you find them. The potholes in the roads I can tolerate, but an underfunded police department I cannot. Their job requires we give them whatever tools they require to do a most dangerous job with possible horrific consequences. Discussing salaries that were approved long before any of this developed is not the solution. Finally, my last thought is this. If I was in the city manager's job market, I am not sure I would apply after doing my due diligence and seeing how this administration was supported or the lack thereof might be something we should consider. Thank you. And I believe that was the last written public comment. So now I will see if we have any raised hands from members of the public. So if you wish to speak, use the raise hand function. At this, I do see one raised hand. It is from Tom Sheeler. He did submit a written public comment, but Mayor, that is up to you.
His comment was fairly short. Let's, let's give him two minutes.
Tom Sheeler, you now can unmute your microphone and speak.
Thank you very much. I guess my one question, and perhaps to the attorney, is that the 12-month contract, my, having been a retired annuitant myself, the most you can work is six months. That's my understanding it, obviously, at a full time. But, so I don't quite understand the 12-month contract. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. And Mr. Jones, would you mind answering that?
Yes, no problem. So there is no set duration in terms of, it can be six months or it can be 12 months. It's, the law says it has to be 960 hours or less, so typically that could be a shorter period of time. However, there is an executive order from the governor during the COVID emergency that is waiting the 960 hours, so you could work more than that at this time. That could change.
Thank you, Ryan.
And Mayor, I have one more raised hand from Robert Wickert. Robert, you can now unmute your microphone and speak.
Thank you very much. I have a short comment. Whoever you hire for city manager needs to live in the city. That's my recommendation, and I think you should take it to heart.
Okay, well, thank you. We're going to be very deliberate about the hiring process of the, of the new city manager. Tonight, we're just talking about the interim to get us there. So again, thank you for your comments. Any other?
I do not see any other raised hands.
Okay. Well, I'm required to read this. State law requires me to summarize any action the city council takes for executive compensation. As Ryan mentioned, the proposed contract would pay Mr. Boyd $128.79 per hour with no benefits, and the length of the contract is until a permanent city manager is hired, or a maximum of 12 months. And with that, I did want to say, tonight's comments about Henry Tingle bring back great memories. If we were faced with an emergency vacancy tonight, I, I would have full faith in asking Henry to consider acting as our interim city manager. Fortunately, we have Mr. Boyd willing to provide continuity, especially with the Pending Relief Act money, that hopefully we comply to restoring all the extra things of our police department. Let me be clear, we didn't cut the core emergency services, but, but like Mr. Wickert said, we, we had to cut some of the ancillary things, some of the things that are very valuable to this community. Mr. Boyd built the police department, and so I think this was one of the hardest things for him to do, is, and we, we cut everywhere we could, and with the police department being a huge part of our budget, we couldn't avoid cuts to the police department. Now hopefully, when we get our application into the federal government, this will allow us to restore our public safety in our city. The other thing I'm concerned with is the ongoing negotiations with the mall ownership group and keeping continuity there, and most importantly, actively guiding this council as we search for and hire our next city manager. Now, we have in front of us a proposed contract that does not require any orientation. Chris can step right back in. It saves us money. I don't think it'll go the whole year, but over a year, we'll save over $100,000, and I wholeheartedly support this and urge the council to approve this course of action. Comments?
I have questions for Ryan about the contract.
Sure, Mr. Daniels.
Ryan, going through the contract, I have a couple of sections that I'd like to get clarification on. Just want to make sure you can hear me?
Sure, Ken.
Okay. Section 1.5 discusses the hours of work, but does not include a maximum number of hours in a week or so, let's say. Would this contract restrict the ability to bill at a maximum of, let's say, 40 hours a week or anything like that?
What, what the law says is that you can't make more than what the, the current city manager or the outgoing city manager made. So he had an annual salary of a certain amount. He could not exceed that. So in a given month, whatever that comes out to, he can't make more than the, the current salary was. So, and, and a given month, is that, is that 40 hours, what it breaks down to? So he can't, he can't bill more than that maximum amount.
And just as clarification, you're saying he can't do that more than that maximum amount, but that maximum amount, is it based on an annual basis? What, it could be on a monthly basis? There's, that's what I'm looking for clarification on. What, what is the maximum that can happen? And you've answered the question, but I don't think it's been specific enough, and maybe I just need to hear it in a different way, that, am I correct in saying that the most that could be billed to the city would be 40 hours in a week?
You know, I actually don't know the answer to that for sure, whether he could do 40 hours. I know he just can't do the maximum of what his salary is over that extended period of time for, for the, for the annual.
Okay. Yep, that's fine. And then going on to section 2.1, which is compensation on the rate of pay, are we required to pay the top hourly rate of $128? Or can we set a different hourly rate?
You can set a different hourly rate.
Thank you.
The current practice is that the, a person coming in as a retired annuitant gets paid what the pre, the, the previous person in that permanent role made.
Okay. And then on section 2.1.2, recording and reporting of hours worked, it appears that there is a restriction on the, well, just about anybody of seeing the timesheets and records, expenses and stuff like that, that we incur. Is it, is that a legal issue? Or are we legally allowed to see that type of thing if the city council so requested?
The city council can't see a timesheet, and subject to a Public Records Act request, they would probably be disclosable. There's certain parts of it, you know, if he took leave for a health reason or some, well, he's not entitled to leave, but if he didn't work for some particular reason like that, that would be redacted. But in terms of how many hours he worked, that is something you'd have access to.
Okay. It's because it reads to me as if we would not, that it would have to be part of a court type of, of a request kind of thing. And then on section 4.1 on termination by the city, are we required to have a 30-day notice type thing, or can we shorten that down if we desire?
No, you don't have to give 30 days' notice. That's, again, standard language in a typical retired annuitant contract, but if the council so choose to make it longer or shorter, they could do that.
Thank you. Well, I mean, you're saying it's typical this and typical that, but really, what we're looking at is not really typical that a city manager retires and comes back immediately. That, that's actually before the governor decided that there was a, an emergency that had to go down into every level of government, I guess, that the city manager would not be allowed to do this. He wouldn't be able to come back for six months and do this. So we're looking at a pretty atypical situation overall. That's all the questions I have regarding the, the contract.
Yeah, we did the same thing with the finance director, Bill Zanoni, just recently. Any other questions?
I have one.
Wait a minute.
If the, if the governor retracts his emergency announcement as far as retired annuitants, and we have Mr. Boyd on contract at that time, and it's within that six-month period, what would happen?
That's a great question. It's not clear what would happen. It would depend on what that new executive order says, when it's going to say you have, that's why he's going to have to calculate his hours from now until that point, because maybe, maybe, let's say, worked 200 hours, maybe he'd only have 760 hours left to, or is, is it going to say when it's rescinded, you know, anybody who had grandfathered in, who had started the program during that emergency is allowed to, you know, work in excess of the 960 hours? What is for sure the case is you're only allowed to work while there's an active recruitment for the hiring of the permanent city manager. So whenever that happens, and you have to actively move that forward. So you're not stalled out for whatever, a period of time. It's got to, it's got to move forward.
Whoever we bring in, bringing in Mr. Boyd as an example, one of his top priorities is to find his replacement and strike that action immediately. Am I hearing you right?
Correct. And that's, that's really the direction of the council. Like, I, I would imagine that that's one of the council's prime goals in, in the role of the interim city manager, find a long-term positive replacement.
Right. Okay. But I think I heard you say, any interim city manager must be actively engaged in that activity to be, to be, to accept the contract, basically.
And that's true of all retired annuitants, yes.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Bruins. Questions? Tim? Any statements or a motion?
Move approval. Move approval.
I have approval of the contract?
Yes. I'm sorry, it wasn't clear. I move approval of the contract to make Christopher Boyd the interim acting city manager.
Second.
Motion.
Just for clarification, there's actually a contract and a resolution, so I think the motion should be to approve both, if that's the will of the council.
Yeah, that, yes, to approve the contract and to make him our interim city manager.
And to approve the resolution.
And to approve the resolution, yes.
I'll second that.
Good. His motion?
I would like to offer a substitute motion, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Continue, I would like to move that we continue the item until our next board meeting, our council meeting on May 27, and that the previous city manager, Henry Tingle, be contacted for consideration.
All right, second.
I'd like to speak to that motion, Mayor.
Yeah, let me jump in just to explain the, Robert's rules of orders on a substitute motion. So.
We're going to take a roll call on that.
Yes, you got to take a roll call on the most recent motion, the substitute motion by Councilmember Daniels. If that passes, that is the motion that passes. If it fails, you could then go back to the original motion.
Correct. Thank you.
I would like to speak to the motion, Mayor.
Sure.
This is not an easy situation. I don't think that there's any secret that there's a fracture in the council regarding the confidence in Mr. Boyd. I think if Mr. Boyd wanted to be our city manager, that he shouldn't have retired. And I don't really understand why he wanted to retire and now wants to come back and work for up to a year. I've been contacted by many people throughout the community, including former council members, planning commissioners, business leaders, citizens. They want to change. They want to see a change. And I think it's time for a change because there are some things that need to be done differently in our city. And I think that Mr. Tingle, who I have reached out to personally, who would come back, in his words, I believe he said absolutely, can get us through this time period, which I hope is just a very short period of time. I would hope that we could find a city manager within an extremely short period of time for our city. We're not a complicated city. But I think we need to do something a little bit different to show the public that we do need to go into a different direction.
Mayor, I'd like to call for the question.
I'll stop. She's called for the question.
Just to be clear, the motion on the table is Mr. Daniels' motion to continue and contact Mr. Tingle.
Correct. Help me out here, because this is one I don't know. Mr. Schaefer wanted to speak, but Vice Mayor Portia's called for the question.
Any council member is allowed to comment before the vote.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure. Mr. Schaefer?
So I also spoke with Mr. Tingle, and as lots of folks know, that I was at odds with the decision to sell the former city property when Henry Tingle was the city manager. And I have also heard lots of voices from the community really requesting Henry could come back and create some healing within the community that's frankly fractured, like Councilmember Daniels said. And as I talked to Henry, I was really impressed that he has actually been following very closely what's happening in our city. He's been retired for five years. He has a very, very close relationship with the city and really cares deeply about this city and wants to see it flourish again. And so with that, I just want to express that I was pretty impressed. Again, I probably said during the, you know, course of the time that Henry was the city manager, I probably said five words to him. So I think it's saying a lot when you have somebody like me who is at odds with the city over that decision to ask him to come back. So I certainly would hope the rest of the council would give us some serious consideration and not dismiss it out of hand.
I'd like to respond and comment.
Go ahead.
I've worked with Henry Tingle longer than anybody else on the city council, except maybe Steve. And he is a wonderful man and a good friend. However, I believe that he's been out of, he has been out of the loop for five years. When he was initially approached by Jana Karpinski-Costa, she noted that he refused, and then she went back and contacted him again. I don't believe going forward would benefit us by going back. I also don't think it would be prudent to have a gap of two weeks where we have no city manager. And to the depth and the extent that Chris Boyd has been involved in so much, I think the continuity and the change that's going to happen is going to happen when we get a new permanent city manager. So I would support continuing on with Chris Boyd until we get a new city manager. I think that will be the smoothest, most continuous thing we can do. And I have to say, I have not heard from one person in the community stating dissatisfaction with Chris Boyd's performance and his hard work as city manager until I received the letter that was read by Jana Karpinski-Costa and two other supporters of bringing back Mr. Henry Tingle. That's it. So this ground swell that I'm hearing from Councilmember Daniels and Councilmember Schaefer is within their own group of people that they communicate with on an ongoing basis, would be my guess, because I haven't heard anything, but I have heard a lot of encouraging comments. So I would support the initial motion and will not support the substitute motion.
Any other comments?
No.
Okay. Then let's do a roll call on the substitute motion to continue this item and consider Henry Tingle. Would you please call a roll, Ms. Van?
Councilmember Bruins?
No.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
No.
And Mayor Miller?
No. So that brings us back to the original motion.
I have their substitute motion, Mayor, regarding the contract itself specifically. I would like to offer that the original motion with the changes of the following changes for section 1.5, that there is specific language added that allows for only 40 hours a week max to be billed. Then under compensation, that the hourly rate be changed to $99 an hour. That was under section 2.1. Under section 2.1.2, that the city council be allowed access to timesheets and expense records at request. And then under section 4.1, that the termination by the city be allowed to happen with a seven-day period instead of a 30-day period.
All right, second.
Okay, there's a substitute motion. Let me make sure I got all this. Limit to 40 hours, $99 an hour, and a seven-day notice for termination. Did I cover it?
And then the city council access to any timesheets or expense reports at request.
That's a given, but okay. Access to timesheets. And, okay. So we have substitute motion. Any comments from council members?
No.
Hearing none. Can you please call, Jeannie, did you want to comment?
Just one, yeah, to pick that apart a little bit, you know. I would not have a problem with the 40-hour-a-week limitation. I think the contract already allows us to have access to timesheets. So that is the problem either. The rest of it, I can't support.
Mr. Jones, could you address access to timesheets by the city council? Is that in the contract?
Yes, it's the law that the council is entitled to those timesheets. I think what I mentioned was there may be parts reacted from it that could be confidential.
Got it.
But the main hours that he has worked, that is something the council has access to.
That brings up a pretty question, Ryan, and that is, to whom does the interim city manager report his time? Is that to you, our city attorney? You froze on me.
Of course, at two in City Hall, it's somebody going to be in industry of services, but the time is reported, the same procedure. It's not, you know, it's not his boss. It's just a mechanism to get him paid.
Okay, so it goes through the normal procedures that the other retired and new itens would do.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, any other comments? If not, please call a roll for this second substitute motion that limits the hours to 40 hours, paid in $99 an hour, seven-day termination notice, and access to timesheets.
Councilmember Bruins? Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
No.
And Mayor Miller?
No. Okay, are we back to the original motion? Okay. And the original motion was to approve the contract and the resolution that we have in front of us. Motion by Middleton, seconded by Bruins, I believe. Would you please call a, pardon?
Correct.
Oh, good, thank you. Would you please call a roll, Ms. Van?
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
No.
Councilmember Schaefer?
No.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Miller?
Aye. All right. That concludes that item. And the motion carries 3-2. Next item, please.
The next item is regular calendar, item 15. The subject is five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 21, 22 through 25, 26. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years 21, 22 through 25, 26.
Can you hear me okay? Good evening, Mayor and council members. Regina Cave, Operations Manager in the General Services Department, before you this evening, as the five-year CIP updated in conjunction with the two-year budget. Typically, in years past, we have done a CIP at the same time that we've done the budget in terms of presenting it to council, but just due to some of the nuances with the schedule, this is kind of an aftermath. This item has already gone to the Planning Commission and where they did make their findings. And so now it is being presented to the council to be adopted. Let me go ahead and share my screen. I hope you all had time to review the CIP when it was sent out with the agenda packets. I'm going to go through just a handful of the projects, specifically focusing on ones that are identified in the CIP with funding or activity within these first two years that we have programmed in the budget. So the state law requires that the city prepare a capital improvement program. This CIP covers a five-year planning horizon, programs funds for two fiscal years, again, in conjunction with the city's new two-year budget. The CIP does not allocate funds. We do just program the funds that we have that are included in the budget and also note any grant funds that we do actually have allocated or secured in terms of outside funding. And then prior to inclusion, the CIP projects are reviewed for consistency with the city's general plan. And again, the Planning Commission has reviewed the CIP and did make their findings last month that is consistent with the general plan. So our annual accessibility and drainage improvements project, this is an annual project where we focus our efforts on constructing or reconstructing deficient ADA ramps. We construct minor sidewalk repairs and relocate conflicting DI's. And this is all in preparation of our planned pavement project or resurfacing project. We try to take advantage of some of the different seasons and are able to do some of this concrete and drainage work that is not as weather temperament as asphalt and paving work is. So the funding for this project is derived from community development block grant funds as well as stormwater utility funds. And this project supports the council's three-year strategic goal of maintaining public infrastructure and enhancing alternative modes of transportation. This project was not specifically called out, however, in council's recent six-year strategic, excuse me, six-month strategic plan. This is our Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Project, otherwise known as our Electric Greenway. This project will construct nearly three miles of multi-use trail between Sunrise Boulevard and Wachtel, connecting from Arcade Creek Preserve up to Wachtel, primarily utilizing, utilizing smuds electric corridor easement. Will provide connections, again, between Seven Parks, several schools, and the Sunrise Marketplace. And the project funding for this is through an active transportation planning grant with match and augmenting funding coming from local transportation dollars, stormwater utility funds, and a per capita state grant that had actually gone to council recently for approval. This project does support council's three-year strategic goal of maintaining public infrastructure and enhancing alternative modes of transportation. Our Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Phase Two, and as presented in the presentation earlier this evening, this project will construct joint trench, widened sidewalks, ADA compliant facilities, update signal lines, intersection, including a new intersection up at the north end, along with a gateway into the city, storm drain improvements, landscape and lighting improvements, and full road resurfacing. This funding is derived from multiple secured grants through SACOG and the CTC with matching funds and augmenting funds coming from a lot of local dollars, roadway impact funds, our stormwater utility funds, and of course, the capital's improvement loan, line of credit. And again, this project also supports multi modes of transportation and maintaining infrastructure. Our Benita Way, Gary Oak Drive, Twin Oaks Avenue Drainage Improvements Project, this project will include improvements at three separate locations originally identified just as Benita Way, but we have expanded since. That project was recently out to bid and will go in before council to award contract. Improvements at locations will help relieve localized flooding and provide proper conveyance of stormwater. And this project does support not only the three-year strategic goal, but was also identified in council's six-month plan. Our Greenback Lane Complete Streets Project will construct and reconstruct efficient sidewalk sections and ADA curb ramps. The project will also provide for intersection safety improvements, including signal communication infrastructure, storm drain improvements, and full road resurfacing. This project will focus on the Greenback Corridor from the Sunrise intersection through the Fair Oaks intersection, working in conjunction with Sacramento County. And this project does support our three-year strategic goal to maintain public infrastructure and enhance modes of transportation. Again, this project was not called out specifically in the six-month plan. This project does receive state, or excuse me, Sacramento Transportation or STA capital allocation as part of Sac County Transportation Expenditure Plan. We're also utilizing gas tax, SB1, Measure 8 maintenance, which is also through the STA, stormwater utility, roadway impact, and transit impact funds. This is our Mariposa Safe Routes to School Phase Four. This project will to construct improvements along Mariposa between Skycrest and Madison Avenue, including ADA improvements at the signalized intersection of Mariposa and Madison. Improvements will include sidewalk, curb gutter ADA, street lighting, street resurfacing, and pavement striping to include bike lanes, again, as a safe routes to school through a residential neighborhood. Funding is derived from an ATP or Active Transportation Program Grant with matching funds coming from our stormwater utility and Measure 8 Bike Ped Funds. Again, this project also supports council's three-year strategic goal and is included in the six-month plan. Our multimodal transportation safety, or MMTSP, this program will implement and construct appropriate countermeasures to address neighborhood safety concerns. The MMTSP was approved by council in terms of the plan, and it utilizes industry standards for countermeasure applications, provides kind of a toolbox and program guidelines for the community and for staff, and uses advanced technology to provide for an interactive process for viewing and managing the data. The program is funded through Measure 8 traffic funds and a portion of Redflex revenues as well. And this project does support council's three-year strategic goal as well as was identified in the six-month plan. Here's our Old Auburn Complete Streets Phase Two. Will provide for design, environmental, and right-of-way for nearly two-mile stretch of the Old Auburn Corridor from Gary Oak to Tiara. This is our Phase One. This phase stems from the thorough development of a conceptual plan, which allowed the city to successfully complete for regional grants as presented earlier by staff to council. The ultimate goal of this project is to provide safe and accessible corridor by constructing improvements for all users, consistent with the council, again, approved plan adopted in 2020. And this phase is funded by an ATP grant with. And this phase is funded by an ATP grant with matching funds derived from Measure eight traffic safety. And this project also supports council's three-year goal of maintaining public infrastructure. And our payment restoration program, this is our annual overlay program where we try to focus on our residential streets. However, we do have flexibility within these funding sources to allow for arterial work as well. Uh, funds may also support projects such as one that we are working in conjunction with Sacramento County to provide, uh, pavement resurfacing along Madison Avenue, portions of Madison Avenue, as well as Kenneth Avenue. The funds are derived from SB one, which is an extension of gas tax, uh, regular gas tax, highway users' tax funds, and Measure eight maintenance funds. And this project supports council's three-year strategic goal of maintaining public infrastructure and was identified as a six-month plan. Our San Juan Complete Streets Project, uh, will provide for design, environmental, and right-of-way from Madison to Spicer, and funding construction from Madison to Chestline. We're still, uh, working to see if we can secure the rest of the funds for full complete streets along that corridor. The project will transform, uh, the corridor into a complete street network by providing enhanced mobility for all users, including ADA, bike, transit facilities, road resurfacing, new street lights, and signal upgrades. Project funding is derived from a SECOG State of Good Repair Grant, which focused, uh, largely on resurfacing, but we also had to include a substantial component of ADA bike ped improvements. And so the matching or augmented funds will come from Measure eight bike ped, traffic safety funds, SB one, stormwater utility, and TDA bike ped funds. But again, we still will continue to, uh, look for alternate funding sources, uh, to be able to augment this project. And this does support, uh, council's three-year strategic goal of maintaining, enhancing alternative modes. And lastly, we have our various signalized intersection improvements project. This project will enhance safety and accessibility at various signals, uh, signalized intersections throughout the city, including at Sunrise Boulevard at the mall. Project will install a barrier fence along three approaches to the Greenback Auburn Intersection to help deter unsafe pedestrian crossings. And funding is derived from an HSEP or Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant with matching and supporting funds coming from our CDVG, the Community Development Block Grant, or Measure eight bike ped, our traffic safety, our stormwater utility, Transportation Development Act funds, and transportation, those transit impact funds. And this project also supports council's three-year goals and was identified in a six-month plan. Uh, and product, this type of project and many others, you can see, reflects staff's hard work of trying to compile different funding sources to deliver, um, projects to our community. I believe that is the end of my presentation. Before you was a requested action, and I will entertain any questions or concerns you have.
Thank you, Ms. Cave, for the, uh, presentation. Uh, any questions?
Yeah, just on the, uh, Sunrise Boulevard fencing, uh, is that something that's going to come back to us at some point, uh, so that, uh, the design of the fencing i- is, is, uh, something we can all consider?
We, we already talked about that. We did.
I must have took that night off.
Yeah.
We're not, just, we're not putting up a, a, a similar fence that we see on Greenback Lane, right?
No.
Thank God.
That's one thing I remember.
Okay.
We were given some different alternatives. Uh, maybe it was a study session. I don't remember, but, uh...
I don't remember it, but that's, that's...
I think we agreed on that very subject.
So, yes, Ms. Cave, this is Cave. I have a, a couple of questions, uh, with regard to the, um, to the, uh, repavement program, uh, rest, pavement restoration program. So we show in, um, in, uh, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, two-point-two million going to that, uh, gas tax at two-hundred thousand, Measure A at two-hundred thousand, none from the general fund. Um, and then in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, uh, so I, I noticed that the FB one is referenced in the Greenback Lane Complete Streets and the San Juan Complete Streets. Are these, um, funds, uh, combined? Are these separate pros, projects that were that, that those funds are allocated separately to the pavement restoration versus Greenback Lane or San Juan Complete Streets?
So we have funding, uh, that we put specifically and identify for our residential streets, whether it's, uh, full resurfacing, full depth replacement, microseals, slurry seals, what have you. But because we also have a couple larger CIPs that are not fully funded through grants or alternative, uh, funding, we are having to use some of our SB one funding. Uh, in the case of the Madison Avenue and Kenneth, uh, the projects that we're working on with county, those items did go before council, uh, in our plan that we presented spring of last year. And within the next, uh, thirty to forty-five days, staff will also be returning to council to make recommendations to allocate our two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two allocations of SB one. Now, our, uh, agreement that we had with county to be able to extend kind of our payments to them for the Madison Avenue and Kenneth projects, we're, to see if we can pay, pay them over two years from our SB one allocations to make sure that we still have enough, our sufficient funding to fund our own resurfacing projects.
Okay.
Did that answer your question?
Um, it, so I, I, so it, can you summarize? Are they shared or not? Is it kind of...
It's shared money. So the allocation that we receive from the state, from State Controller's Office, based upon their annual estimates, and for Citrus Heights, about one-point-seventy-year. We have the flexibility to use those funds how we deem appropriate. Uh, council's direction, past couple years has been let's try to focus those funds as much as possible on our residential streets. But I, um, also taking into consideration, because those funds are flexible, we do need to put them in some situations on some of our arterial streets. And those arterial streets also include pavement restoration, so it would be appropriate use of those funds.
So the other, uh, and I, I, I did review, um, the, the CIPs from previous years, about five previous years, and it seems as though, uh, when we do have a substantial amount of SB one funding or Measure A, we seem to not, uh, contribute from, uh, the account two-ten, the maintenance from our general bu- fund budget. Uh, is that your experience as well? That, that, am I incorrect on, uh, in looking at that and seeing that we get a lot of SB one funds and then we sort of decide, all right? And I, and I want to put you in a position where, um, you're, uh, you know, making it any kind of, I'm just curious if that's, that's something that you see as well.
So we don't receive or, uh, allocate any of the general fund, funds towards any of our overlays. We have it for quite some time. Uh, the SB one is the largest portion of, uh, contributing dollars towards our overlay program, and, uh, just to be conservative in recognizing that our two-ten and our gas and our two-of-five, which is two-ten is Measure A and two-of-five is gas tax, recognizing that both of those funding sources also support, heavily support our operations, meaning, um, our landscape, our travel and they subsidize our streetlights, um, our potholes, our street striping, our signage replacement, covers a lot of our contracts and a lot of our day-to-day maintenance here in the city. So I try to be really conservative on how much funding we actually can allocate from those, uh, two funding sources towards our overlays or restoration projects. Having said that, when we do have surplus or unspent funds which roll over into the next fiscal year, I'm able to allocate those funds, uh, in larger sums towards the following year's overlay program. So what you see before you is a little bit more conservative, but recognizing the cash balance that we have in those, uh, funds and gas tax and measuring maintenance, we will look to see if we can allocate additional funds and come back to council, uh, during our mid-year budget.
Thank you very much, Regina. Appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments?
Um, I move that we, uh, adopt the rev- resolution to approve the five-year capital improvement program for fiscal years twenty-one, twenty-two, and through twenty-five, twenty-six.
Second.
Motion by Bruins, seconded by Daniels. Amy, please call the roll.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Miller?
Aye. Motion carries five-zero.
The next item is regular calendar, item number sixteen. The subject is review the Sacramento Storm Water Quality Partnership Program and authorize fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two expenditures. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to expend stormwater funds for the City of Citrus Heights' shared cost of joint implemented municipal separate storm sewer system requirements with the Sacramento Storm Quality Partnership.
And before we start, I was remiss on the last item of not thanking Regina Cave for great presentation, and, uh, her answers are always spot-on and really help understand how we're paving the roads. So again, thank you, Regina.
You're welcome.
All right. Leslie? Or who's ever presenting?
This is Dirk Mettmas, Associate Civil Engineer.
Oh, hi, Dirk.
I was expecting to hear Leslie introduce me, but, um, maybe she, um, had to step away. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. In two thousand twelve, the city entered into an LOU with Sacramento County and the five other cities in the county that are grouped together by the Regional Water Board for the Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit. The seven agencies formed the Sacramento Storm Water Quality Partnership to coordinate joint compliance activities for administrative and cost responsibilities. There are many compliance activities that are conducted by each agency individually, but the budget being presented this evening is for the joint activities. The cost split for the joint activities is based on the relative population of each agency, which for the City of Citrus Heights is currently five-point-nine percent. The compliance activities provided by the partnership include monitoring and target pollutant programs, regional public outreach programs, regional commercial and industrial programs, new development and program management. As shown on the budget attached to the staff report, the joint activities for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two total approximately one-point-three million dollars, of which the City of Citrus Heights is responsible for less than seventy-six thousand. More than half of the budget is for the monitoring and special studies program. This program tests and evaluates the receiving water qualities and several targeted studies, including the Delta Regional Monitoring Program. The other programs are much smaller. If you'd like more details, I'd be happy to provide more information on those other programs with the caveat that these programs are run by the city and county of Sacramento staff with lesser involvement from the partner agencies. The item before you tonight is the resolution authorizing the city manager to expend stormwater funds for the City of Citrus Heights' shared cost of joint implemented municipal separate storm sewer system requirements with the Sacramento Storm Water Quality Partnership. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them now.
Thank you, Dirk. Any questions? I think that was a very thorough report, and there are no questions. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move staff's recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Daniels, seconded by Middleton. Ms. Van, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Thank you. On to the next item, please.
The next item is department reports, and we do have one item from the Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I was, uh, requested by Councilmember Schaefer to explain our Project Lifesaver in the Police Department here. And, um, I'm proud to say that we've had Project Lifesaver for some time. Uh, what it is, is we use state-of-the-art technology to assist in the location and recovery of victims of Alzheimer's, dementia, autism, or other cognitive, cognitive disorders, and we return them to caregivers or their families. Project Lifesaver is a program that coordinates the placement of personalized radio transmitter wristbands and, on individuals who are at risk of wandering away from their homes. Police Department then, uh, teams with the, the homeowners, the families, the caregivers, and we can use these transmitters, uh, signals to locate individuals if they've gotten lost or, or wandered away from their home. Uh, how it works, and this is a great opportunity to educate our public, is that, uh, any family member or caregiver can contact us here at the Citrus Heights Police Department. The person is fitted with a unique lightweight battery-operated wrist or ankle band which emits a silent radio signal twenty-four hours a day. The band and battery are maintained and replaced by us here at the Police Department, either by personnel or volunteers. And when a participant's missing, uh, caregivers are notified by the Police Department, and a specially-trained search team uses a remote locator to find the missing person. Uh, since we've had Project Lifesaver here in Citrus Heights, we've had over sixty-two clients. Uh, we've offered, uh, with this, um, it, since the inception, nationwide, uh, Project Lifesaver, because it's, it exists in many communities, not just ours. Uh, they've had three thousand seven-hundred-and-seventy-three rescues of, um, people using this technology. Here in Citrus Heights, we've had five successful rescues, uh, so we're, we're happy about that because that very likely saves some people's lives. Uh, Project Lifesaver is offered free of charge to Citrus Heights residents due to the generous donation of local businesses, neighborhood association, and individual citizens. And you can learn more about Project Lifesaver or sign up by visiting, uh, projectlifesaver@citrusheights.net. That's an email address, and they will send you the information, projectlifesaver@citrusheights.net. And, Mr. Mayor, unless there's any questions, that's my report.
Thank you, Chief.
I'd just like to thank you very much, Chief, for, uh, for bringing that forward. I did, uh, have a resident, uh, contact me and, uh, learned that, uh, Project Lifesaver exists, uh, and from Lincoln. And, uh, when he contacted the Lincoln Police Department to find out more information, Lincoln Police Department said Citrus Heights has been, uh, participating in the program for a couple of years. Um, and I looked it up, and it was January eighth, two thousand nineteen. Um, I, I just want to commend the Police Department for a, 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 a job well done, and thank you very much, Chief, that, that we certainly want all of our residents, residents, uh, to be aware that this, uh, resource is available. And, um, and, uh, it is, it's near and dear to my heart. My wife is a, um, is a geriatric nurse who, who works in an assisted living facility, so it really is, uh, something that hits close to home for me. So, um, thank you very much, Chief. We really appreciate it, and, um, and have a great evening.
Mayor, one thing on it?
Go ahead.
Chief, do we, uh, do any outreach with this? Uh, you know, we have a, a very high senior population here. I'm just wondering, and, uh, and I'm glad that there's, I believe you said sixty-two, uh, in the program, but, uh, I just got to know that there's a whole lot more. And then I know we have some facilities that are specific to this kind of issue. Just wondering, do we do any outreach, or is that something that maybe we could think about doing in the future?
Yeah, we do. Uh, in fact, when, if we have a, a home or, um, uh, you know, in-care facility that, that comes to our city, uh, we all, obviously reach out to them. We also advertise on social media and our website. Um, but quite often, what we experience is we'll have somebody go missing, uh, and we work with the family to find them, and then we introduce them to this program on an individual basis. So we do quite a bit of re- outreach, and it's been successful, but I, I appreciate the opportunity to do some more here tonight at the council meeting.
Thank you very much.
We're in. Next item?
Next item is city manager items, and there are none.
I did, I did want to say under city manager items that, uh, I wanted to thank, uh, Chief Lawrence for acting city manager this week. And, uh, I'm sorry, I want to apologize, his name didn't come up, but he, I, knowing Ronnie, he may be glad it didn't come up in the conversation. Okay, next item.
And the next item is items requested by council members, future agenda items.
You got any? Well, then I get to do something I haven't done in over a year. We are adjourned. Emphasis added.